Roll call, Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Mayor-elect Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Vicaro.
Here, and before we get started, I think our city manager has a quick announcement.
Yeah, just, obviously, we are pretty packed in here. It's great to see everybody here tonight. Thank you all for coming out. The fire marshal asked that I make a brief little announcement because of how full we are. There he's giving me the thumbs up in the back. There are three exits should we, in some unfortunate situation, need them. Obviously, the front door, there's an emergency exit back over in this back corner, as well as a public emergency exit back behind where I'm sitting here as well. Also, we had some seats with signs on them that were reserved. That was for our elected's family and friends. I think we might still have a couple of seats that are open that are no longer needed right down there. Oh, you need those two? Never mind. Oh, yeah, so there's two open over here if somebody wanted to, and there's a couple more over here. So, at this point, if folks want to take a seat, feel free. Acting mayor, that is it.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick thank you, too, to Linda Peterson and the Suzuki Strings. I know Mayor Price and his wife Betsy love the Suzuki Strings, so thank you so much for playing at the reception. So, now I'd like to, in the invocation, tonight will be worship Pastor Jeff Hood from the First Baptist Church. Pastor Hood?
Hi. Let's pray together. Lord, we are thankful for this body which meets tonight, does their best to lead our city in the way it should go, and I pray for your leadership tonight. Help mayor and the council lead well. Give them wisdom as they seek to make decisions that impact our city, and I pray that your will would be done.
Yes, Lord.
And Father, tonight I want to express gratitude for the life of Mayor Price. He was a public servant, a man who was devoted to and loved his city, spent many years of his life in activity to make Fairfield a flourishing, thriving place, and I thank you for his life, Lord. And tonight, as new council members take their oaths and are recognized, I pray that you would pour out a new measure of your blessing on this body, and I pray that the decisions that would be made would be filled with wisdom and hope and faithfulness, and the city council would act in the best interests of Fairfield, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Tim, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I would. Would you please join me? Salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to presentations, Mr. City Manager, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, two very minor changes. So, under the first half of the agenda before this council, existing council, will adjourn for the last time. Item A, which is Aaron Hannigan will administer the oath of office to Mayor Catherine Kat Moy, that will be taken last in the swearing-in of oath of office. And then, item E, which is selection of vice mayor, that will move to new business under the city council after the oaths of office have been administered and the new city council has reconvened the meeting. They then will be the ones to decide on the selection of the vice mayor. Those are the only changes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, presentations?
Yes, item one, "Infinite Gratitude," poem presented by our poet laureate Suzanne Bruce.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Moy and council members and audience. Although this evening is met with heartfelt remembrances of Mayor Price, it's also a time of happiness for those who are stepping up into new roles. It is a time for appreciation, moments tinge with sadness but bound by optimism and spirited with much thankfulness. My poem is "Infinite Gratitude." Here in Fairfield, where spirits are songs and dreams rise like notes to lift and build community, where anything and everything is possible, as we stand in this space between past and tomorrow, reach deep into pockets of remembrance, pause in silent appreciation. As the flame of time flickers, we reflect on successes, revere resilience through difficult times, recollect sacrifices made. As we watch this transfer begin, newly-elected officials step in. Like a garden full of abundant blossoms, individual grandeur does not stand alone, collective vibrancy the strength, awareness the nourishment. As we are here in this place where past accomplishments and hopes of tomorrow merge, energy surges and new ideas spring into motion. We see their calling to serve, one group of candles lighting the others as we applaud with infinite gratitude, as we watch tomorrow being cultivated today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next presentation?
Yes, presentation two, proclamation thanking Chuck Tim for his service to Fairfield, presented by Councilmember Bertani.
Chuck is a friend, and to me, like a brother, as you know. So, it is my great honor to read this proclamation. I'll let you hold the key to the city. This thing actually works, so be careful. You can open every door with that thing. Whereas Chuck Tim has served the Fairfield community dutifully with commitment and dedication for forty-three years. And whereas Chuck is the son of a retired Air Force Colonel who was assigned to several places, and as a result Chuck spent four years of his youth living in Europe and the remainder moving around the United States. And whereas Chuck spent his senior year of high school in Fairfield while his father was stationed at Travis Air Force Base. During that time Chuck became a member of the Travis Air Force Base Civil Air Patrol. Subsequently, he earned an Associate of Science in Criminal Justice and a Bachelor of Arts in Human Resource Management. And I'm not done. Whereas Chuck's career in law enforcement began in the city of Fairfield as a community service aide in 1973, he promoted to police officer in 1976 and was named Officer of the Year in 1984. He promoted again to sergeant in 1986 and was named Manager of the Year in 1993. Chuck is a thirty-one-year veteran of the Fairfield Police Department, retiring in 2004 as a police sergeant. Still not done. Whereas Chuck was elected to the Fairfield City Council in November 2007 to 2011 and re-elected in 2014, serving four more years to December 2022. And whereas for six of those years, Chuck served as vice mayor, served on the Board of the Sassoon Valley Advisory Fund, was president and vice president of the Fairfield-Sassoon Sewer District, served as an alternate on the Solano Transportation Authority Board and Solano County Water Agency. And whereas Chuck served as board chair to the original Solano Family Justice Center and as a voting member of the Solano Senior Coalition. He was an advisor to the Board of the Levin and served on the Board of Solano First Federal Credit Union. That is a handsome record of service. Thank you, Chuck. Right, right, yeah. Now, therefore, Harry T. Price posthumously as mayor asks you to join us in recognizing and celebrating Chuck Tim for all his years of service to our community. Chuck, thank you, sir.
I didn't know where you guys dug all that stuff up, but thank you so very much. What I would like to say, I'm going to do my best. My wife Pat, my oldest granddaughter, Harry Price was responsible for the first part of that. He was our English teacher and went to my high school graduation party, attended our wedding. He's been like a father to me, but more importantly, I think, is from the first day that I walked into these council chambers, Mayor Harry Price was here saying, "Son, you're still not done learning." And from policy to politics to procedure, he was the guy you could go to. And he was very nondescript. He might call you aside and saying, "Well, maybe you shouldn't have said quite like that what you said," but he was always there. I found him to be a gentle giant, very quiet, very unassuming, but he packed a mean wallop. He was so very well-respected that I am honored to call him my friend, our friends. And I'll leave you with this, is that he said, "Chuck, you're here to represent the people to the city, not the other way around." And he firmly believed that. Anywhere I would go, Harry was there, and he said, "Well, you missed something an hour ago." Mayor Price went everywhere. The citizens of the city and this community meant the most to him, and I would like to say thank you to Harry Price, thank you to my colleagues on the council. I'm going to miss you, and thank you and God bless. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and I just wish you health and happiness. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
And our next presentation, proclamation thanking Harry Price for his service to Fairfield, presented by Vice Mayor Rick Vicaro.
There's a lot of stuff here. I'd like Mayor Price's family to join me up here, please. It's really great to have you guys here. I know this is a sad time, but it's just very special that you're here. As Chuck said, I mean, I have some comments I'll make later on about Mayor Price, so right now I will stick to the proclamation, which probably will be hard. So, whereas Harry T. Price has served the Fairfield community honorably with loyalty and dedication for fifty-seven years. Whereas Harry was born and raised in Lockhaven, Pennsylvania, while attending Lockhaven State University where he earned a bachelor's degree, he served as a master of ceremonies throughout the area until he became a news anchor for WB-PZ-TV, CBS-TV Satellite Station. And whereas Harry and his family moved to Fairfield in 1965 when he began a thirty-three-year career teaching English at Vanden High School. Awarded an academic fellowship in 1969, he took a leave of absence and moved his family to Western Washington State University in Bellingham, Washington, where he earned a Master of Science degree in 1970. And whereas, Harry was selected as the Solano County Teacher of the Year in 1986, incredible accomplishment, by the way, and continued teaching until his retirement in 1998. And whereas, Harry was appointed to the Civic Arts and Leisure Services Commission in 1988, where he served until he was appointed to the Fairfield Planning Commission in 1992. He served on the Planning Commission until his election to the Fairfield City Council in 1997. Harry was elected vice mayor in 1999, ran unopposed for mayor in 2005, and was re-elected mayor in 2009, 2014, and 2018, serving sixteen years as the mayor. And whereas active in the League of California Cities, Harry was elected president of the North Bay Division in 2002. He served three terms as elected president of the Fairfield-Sassoon Sewer District, past president of the California Association of Sanitary Agencies, and was a member of the association's executive board of directors for nine years. Incredible accomplishments for our late mayor. Now, therefore, I, Rick Vicaro, Vice Mayor of the city of Fairfield, ask you to join me in recognizing and celebrating Harry T. Price for all his years of service to our community. Harry, we miss you and love you. Thank you. Okay. Lois Cross, can you hear me right? Come on up, Lois.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Vicaro and the city council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to represent Congressman Garamendi and so to his family. In honor to recognize Mayor Harry Price today for his thirty-four years of exemplary service to the city of Fairfield. Mayor Price began his career in public service in 1988 after being appointed to the Civic Arts and Leisure Services Commission, excuse me, where he served until being appointed to the Fairfield Planning Commission in 1992. In 1997, Mayor Price was elected to the Fairfield City Council where he would serve diligently until his election to vice mayor in 1999. In 2005, he was elected to serve as mayor, winning reelection in 2009, 2014, and 2018. In his sixteen years as mayor, Harry demonstrated extraordinary leadership Mayor, Harry demonstrated extraordinary leadership, kindness, and compassion. Under his leadership, Fairfield experienced great economic steadfast expansion as well as steady guidance in the face of uncertain time. Mayor Price's dedication to the city of Fairfield is what makes the community, the city, the county, and the district a great place to live. On behalf of the people of the California's 3rd Congressional District, I would like to express my gratitude for his many years of service. So I'd like to present this congressional commendation to all of you. And now, Mr. Chuck Tim. You don't get to get too comfortable over there. Just bring yourself on down here. Come on, you're getting your exercise. So tonight, in honor to recognize Chuck Tim today as he is celebrated for his 15 years of exemplary service as a City Council Member for the city of Fairfield. Since first being elected to the City Council in 2007, Chuck has demonstrated incredible leadership and dedication to Fairfield's development. As City Council Member, he has served as an advisor to the Board of the Levin, Board Member for the Chamber of Commerce, President of the Board for Solano County Family Justice Center, and Board Member of Solano First Federal Credit Union. Chuck has also worked diligently as a County Representative to the Senior Coalition, a City Representative to the Sassoon Valley Fund Advisory Committee, and an alternate to the Redevelopment Oversight Committee. Like so many in Fairfield, he was brought to this city by Travis Air Force Base and has continued his service by supporting the city. On behalf of the people of the California's 3rd Congressional District, please accept my sincere gratitude for your many, many years of service and my best wishes in your future endeavors.
Police Chief Dan Marshall, can you come up?
Good evening. So I have just a couple plaques in appreciation for the service of both of these individuals. I started in 1999, and Mayor Price at that time was a council member, and then obviously the mayor. So he is, I've known him on this dais since I began my career. I won't tell you Chuck how old I was when, or when you started your career. I didn't know that until you read this earlier tonight. But in honor of Mayor Price, thank you for allowing us to have him for so long. He was instrumental in youth for us. We started the PAL program in 2008, and he led that charge. It's been very successful since that time. So we are very grateful. I remember a time when I brought my daughter, she had won the class mayor, and he pulled off his pen and handed it to her. He will be forever missed. Thank you. Chuck, you're not done. So when I first started, Chuck was not only, he became a council member, but he was the first police sergeant I worked for. So thank you Chuck for not only your years of service as a police sergeant and a police officer, but for all your council time and your support at the Fairfield Police Department. Thank you.
You know, what I was gonna say was, I trained two individuals that are chiefs of police. One was Joe Alia, one is Dan Marshall. I think maybe I got that trait from Harry Price. I was a police sergeant. And these fine gentlemen represented our cities very well. And excellent, excellent agencies. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much for the presentations. We're now turning to council reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Pandora. Any report?
Thank you Councilmember Rick, or Vice Mayor Rick. And thank you everyone for being here this evening. It's always great to have a full chambers. I know it's a somber night, but also celebratory at the same time. And I don't know, I get to go first, but I'm gonna hold it together. I just wanted to share a few words about Mayor Price. And I'm gonna stick to what I wrote, because then I'm gonna lose it. So I would not be here without him or his support. He was one of my biggest supporters in all three of my campaigns. And beyond. He always wanted to know how I liked all the events and conferences that we went to together. He was always so excited to see me afterwards and ask me, "How did it go? How did you like it?" And we'd chat about it. He encouraged me to get involved and would always thank me for attending events. He'd always come up to me and tell me, "Thank you Doris for being here." And I was like, "Mayor, absolutely. I love doing this." And he would just laugh. I always knew there was a bag of jelly bellies nearby when he was around. And he loved to give them out at conferences, because it was his way to share our little piece of the world with everybody else in this state and in this country. He will always be in my heart, especially here when I'm on the dais. And I hope that I can continue to make him proud. Rest well, Mayor Price. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tonason?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So I'm gonna start with the fun stuff. Harry always said Fairfield's the sweetest town beside of the Mississippi. And he said that everywhere he went. He was a great storyteller. And it could go on for, sometimes. He was always the teacher. And he was fast at the airports, you know, with the council. We would always, you know, we'd go on quite a few trips. And let me tell you something, if Harry gets in front of you and starts moving, you're gonna have to run to catch him. It's, he puts that bag down and he goes. And it's fun to watch. And again, I think someone mentioned it, he's always handing out pins and the key to the city. And I'm sure I'm stealing this from others, but you don't ever want to speak after Mayor Price. That's, that doesn't go well. He was, he did the ultimate Santa countdown at the, at the Christmas tree lightings. He was so jovial, it was, it was just fun to be around him. He's always, he was, you ask him how he's doing. He, he came in one day with, he had had some surgery, something done on his foot. And, "How you doing, Mayor?" He goes, "I couldn't be better." He goes, "Couldn't be better. It's a great day." I mean, that was him all the time. And we just learned so much from him. And I'm gonna miss him and I love him. So rest in peace, Mayor.
Thank you Scott. Councilman Tim?
Thank you. Last time, I am thrilled to see the folks here, not only for Mayor Harry Price, because there will be more to come, but also, we've elected new people, and this is their first time. Pretty soon, they'll be sitting at the dais. And what I would say is Doris is not new, Pandora, but a new four years. Kate Patrice-Williams, four years. Well done, ma'am. Well done. Doug Carr. Doug, there you are, sir. Shortly, you'll be up here and you'll have a great view. And then Mayor-elect Kat Moy. I say congratulations to all of you. I think we have done Harry Price proud tonight, and I wish you good governance and Godspeed. Vice Mayor, thank you, sir.
Mayor-elect Moy?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Vaccaro. Harry, I knew Harry for decades. I knew him first as a reporter. And that got us off to a, a little bit of a rough start. I mean, usually politicians and people, especially an aggressive reporter, you know, can be a little, but what was good about it was that he understood. I mean, he did do TV news. And that voice, I mean, you know, Councilwoman Tonason over here said he wouldn't want to, you know, nobody wanted to follow him in his speech. Imagine what it feels like following him as mayor. Of 17 years it was, not 16. It was 17, because we had an extra year that we added on, so we could change the dates that, to save us money in the city is what we did. So we could have our elections along with everybody else. But Mayor Price and I had a special kind of relationship. When I, my father died before I was sworn in, the very first time I was elected, and Mayor Price came to my father's funeral. And, and I'll never forget him standing there, always the gentleman, always representing the city, and showing a lot of love that he did for everybody here in this city. And I've always appreciated that about him. He really loved the city, and he loved all of you very much. Maybe he didn't tell you as much as like I do. I'm always saying it, but he really did love all of you. And he always had a kind smile, and he was a great storyteller. During the campaign, I recall, we got some kind of question, and I think it was about, it was about how difficult times had gotten now because of inflation. And so he talked to us about living through the Great Depression. And what got me, I didn't want to burst out laughing, but it was, it kind of just struck me, it's kind of funny. He talked about having to eat his pet bunny. And the way that he said it was just so, it was like so hairy, it was so classy, but it was something that people did. And it reminded me that this is a man who'd seen so much. And we got to experience some of that through our time with him. And in 2013, when I got cancer, he was my one colleague who asked if he could take me to go get chemo. He said, "If you ever need a ride, and need somebody to sit with you, I'll do it." And so four years ago, I was gonna run for mayor, and his wife was stricken with cancer. And I went to him and I said, "You don't have to worry about me. I know what it's like to fight for your life with cancer. I would never do that to you or your wife." And the beloved First Lady, we lost her. And he never stopped missing her. I'm glad they're back together. I'll miss Harry. He taught me so much. When he and I were on the same page on something, he'd wink to me, especially when the others weren't with us, and I'd wink back to him. And we had a, we had a special kind of relationship, very special. And I will miss him. And I'm gonna do him proud. And we're gonna do him proud. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bertani?
To the mayor, to the family of Mayor Price, our deepest condolences. Everyone on this dais has never been to a city council meeting without Mayor Price being here. In fact, we all expected to see him in person today. But we know that Mayor Price is with us in spirit, and always will be. He is in God's hands. We are in God's hands. And that is the best place that we could ever want to be. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on this earth as it is in heaven. Now from the Bertani family to your family, this is for our beloved Mayor Price.
I would just like to ask that we all take a moment of silence for the mayor, who has always showed me a smile when I've seen him. Has always said, "Hey Tyler, how you doing? Still singing?" He didn't have to say, "I love you" over and over again. He showed us he loved us. So let's take a moment for the mayor. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Thank you.
Wow. Pretty awesome. Thank you. Okay, well, first of all, let me start out by congratulating my colleagues and soon-to-be colleagues on their swearing-in this evening. You know, we've heard many great things about Mayor, what Mayor Price has done for our community. So I'd like to pay a personal tribute to my friend, my mentor, Harry Price. And as, you know, Councilman Tonason said, and Mayor-elect Moy about, you know, never, nobody wanted to speak after Harry. Well, amen to that, because I never wanted to speak after Harry, because he was just too good. That's the bottom line. There really isn't enough time for me to say everything that I want to say. But I'll just share a few, many, many special memories my family and I have of Harry, because he really meant so much to our family. You know, Harry was there at both of our children's weddings. He really loved our kids. In fact, when they were at Holy Spirit School, he used to volunteer his time to teach the children public speaking. And I used to ask him, ask my kids, "How come you're not as good a speaker as Harry?" He goes, "Well, nobody's that good," right? When my late mother-in-law turned 90, Harry was at the door with a proclamation, making her feel so special. And it meant so much to my wife, and me, and the kids. Harry was there when I first was appointed to council after the tragic death of Matt Garcia. And I had no idea what I was doing. And Harry just said, "Rick, just follow my lead." And that's exactly what I've been trying to do all these years. So thank you, Harry. Harry was always there when I needed advice, had questions, or just needed someone to listen to, because he was always there to listen. A few months after his wife Betsy died, Harry brought over two nice coats of hers and told my wife Sue, "These are gonna, these will fit you, and I know Betsy would want you to have them." And that meant so much to Sue. She loved Harry. Couple of months ago, I had an event for Harry at our house. Congressman John Garimendi came and stayed the whole evening. When I invited him, I said, "Congressman, I wasn't sure if you could make it." Knowing his crazy schedule, he said, "Rick, I will be there. This is Harry Price, my favorite mayor." And I said, "And I'm favorite mayor, how many times did I..." How many times did I hear that?" Everyone loved Harry, the way he treated everyone with kindness and respect. Harry will always be the mayor, he was absolutely the best. I don't know if anyone could ever replace him and who he, who he was. In the words of June Johnson, and I saw her here earlier, June, are you here somewhere? In the words of June Johnson at our last council meeting, "When you look up the word mayor in the dictionary, it says Harry Price." I'll end it saying this, Harry is in God's hands now, and heaven is a much better place because of it. I will always love you and miss you, my friend. Your report, Mr. City Manager.
I have no report, but like the rest of you, was, was very blessed to have known Harry. There are a lot of people in this council chambers today that knew Harry a lot longer than me. And over this past year, where I was serving as interim city manager, I was fortunate to learn from Harry. And one of the things that I learned from Harry the most was absolutely what a servant leader is. And we hear about a servant leader, and a servant leader is someone who gives themselves to others to help others achieve what it is that they seek to achieve, and to give themselves in service to others. And I think all of the beautiful words that have been spoken here tonight by everyone on council, as well as recognition from, you know, Congress, is a testament to the service and servant leader that Harry was. He was a remarkable person, and my deepest condolences to Pam and your family. I'm so happy I got to know Harry, so, thank you.
Your report, Madam Clerk.
I don't know, it's a hard act to follow, all of these people, but Harry was in my office about three times the day before he passed. And of course, he was always talking about his family, and I had known Betsy quite, for many years, she was a ser optimist with me. And he was telling me that day how much he missed her. He in fact got very teary-eyed, which made me teary-eyed. He was saying he didn't really want to go to Hawaii to visit without her, because that was always their special place that they would go to visit. And of course, he was always asking, "I'm going to be a grandma in January, and my daughter's expecting identical twin boys." So he always would inquire about that every time I saw him. He was just the kindest, most wonderful human being, really. And I'm going to miss him very much. So my condolences to Pam and your family, and also Randy and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Your city attorney, your report.
Before I give my report, I want to do, also echo staff and council and offer my condolences to the family of Mayor Price. I've only been city attorney a short time, but I remember when I started, city attorney's office is on the fourth floor adjacent to the mayor's office. And within the first couple of weeks of my starting, Mayor Price made an appointment to come see me. And usually, you know, people run from attorneys because we always got bad news or telling people they can't do something. And he welcomed me with open arms and, you know, invited me to lunch and showed me, you know, the best restaurants in Fairfield, and just really made me feel welcome. And such a great leader and such experience and wisdom, he really made my job as city attorney very, very easy. So I know everyone is in mourning because we've lost a true leader, not just for the city, but for the entire region, state, and the country. In terms of official report, Acting Mayor Vaccaro, I want to report out of closed session that the council sent out an employment agreement for the city manager, David Gasaway, that will be taken up as item number five as new business.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, the consent calendar notice, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers on the consent?
Not for item four, no.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved, so moved by Councilwoman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so we will move on to new business, item five. Madam Clerk.
New business, item five, resolution 2022-338 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the city manager employment agreement between the City of Fairfield and David Gasaway, and amending the salary schedule. And our presenter is City Attorney David Lim.
And thank you, good evening, Acting Mayor and members of the city council. Before you, it's resolution 2022-338, which is a resolution approving the city manager employment agreement between the City of Fairfield and David Gasaway, who is currently the interim city manager. This resolution would hire him full-time as the acting city manager, or as the full-time city manager, and amend the salary schedule. As the council knows, you hired Mr. Gasaway as an interim city manager on January 18th of this year, extended that on June 21st of this year, and in December, on December 6th, you directed the city attorney with Vice Mayor Vaccaro and Councilmember Moy to negotiate a full-time contract with Mr. Gasaway. We have done that in due diligence, we met in closed session just prior to this meeting, and out of that closed session comes before you the current employment agreement and resolution for your consideration and possible adoption. At this point, I'll take any questions that you have for me or any comments.
Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, I do not.
Entertain a motion to approve this resolution? So moved. So moved by Councilwoman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, now we turn to the fun stuff here. So, we're going to begin with administer the oath of office to Councilmember Kate Patrice, and that will be with Assemblywoman Lori Wilson.
Hey you. Do I gotta press a button? Oh, we're going to do this instead? Okay, sounds good. Isn't this an exciting day? Is it on? Can you hear me fine? I didn't think so. And I talk really loud, and so I can't hear if I vibrate over. It's snow light. Can you hear me now? All right, well, it is an absolute pleasure to be here tonight, on a wonderful occasion to administer the oath of office to Kate Patrice Williams, who did win the election this past November, and to celebrate with all the council members and the mayor who's being sworn in tonight, as well as a time of remembrance for Mayor Harry Price. And so just quickly, I'll say to the family, I offer my deepest condolences. I had the opportunity to meet Harry Price in 2010. From the moment I was elected, he was an encourager. And that is what I know I've heard all night long, that Mayor Price was an encourager, for sure. And he will forever be our statesman for Fairfield, and it's only fitting that he loved being mayor, and he lived the rest of his life being the mayor of Fairfield, and he is now a partner to all of you, and including our newly elected. So with that, I ask, as I administer the oath, I ask that you repeat after me, and then when I say state your name, state your name. Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye. Kate Patrice Williams.
I forgot to say state your name, so we'll start all over. So, for the, for the video, we need it to be correct. It needs to be on Instagram well, Twitter well, social media well. Okay, all right. I state your name.
I, Kate Patrice Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
All right, who do we have next?
Next, we have Joe Martinez will administer the oath of office to Councilmember Doug Carr. Our two new council members.
Just want to introduce to you all my brother from another mother. We met in 2016 at the probation department, and we were just, we hit it off smoothly. And I'm honored to call him my brother. His people from Scotland, my people from the Philippines, we came together, wore kilts and ate chicken adobo together. And here we are. I.
I.
State your name.
Doug Carr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, that I will, that I will, and faithfully.
That I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Okay, so now we'll have Alonzo Allen will administer the oath of office to Councilmember
My name is Alonzo Allen, this is my auntie Doris.
And he's here because he has helped me in all of my campaigns, he's knocked doors with me, he's been my promotional, some of you have gotten him in your mail, so, I love this kid.
All right, all right, ready? All right. I, state your name.
I, Doris Pandaro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, and next, we have Supervisor Erin Hannigan will administer the oath of office to Mayor-elect Catherine Kat Moy.
He's adorable. Am I swearing you in? Oh, I didn't think so. Oh, there you are.
Stand next to my wife.
Here he comes. I love it. He's been waiting for this for a while. I do want to say a few words first, if you don't mind. Is that all right? All right. My deepest condolences to the family of Harry Price. I first met Harry Price in 2008, I was newly elected to the city council in Vallejo, and there were two great tragedies that happened here in Fairfield, makes me nervous thinking about it. And your father was just the consummate elder statesman. He had all the right words to say at all the right times to a community that was in mourning. And that's what's so sad about now, is he's not here to hold our hand, to carry us through our own mourning for his loss. And so thank you for sharing your father with us here in the city of Fairfield and throughout Solano County. He was very deeply loved, and he will be missed by many. All right, Ms. Moy. Whew, and in this holiday season, just hold on, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Kwanzaa. And congratulations to all of the Fairfield council, especially to our new council people, not new so much, Councilwoman Doris Pandaro, congratulations on your four-year term. Really excited to see you up here. And also Councilmember-elect, actually Councilmember Kate Patrice Williams, and Councilmember Doug Carr. I look forward to getting to meet you more, sir, and let's work together. So I'm going to start out by saying a little story. So the year is 1978, and I first met Kat through Kat's sister Annette, raise your hand. We were, we were students at Fairfield High, we were freshmen in Mr. Leonard's English class, this seems to be a theme, English class. And that's when I met Annette. And through Annette, I met her older sister Kat. And she had, Annette had something I always wanted, and that was an older sister. And so through Annette, I got to spend a lot of time with Kat, though she wasn't too interested in us, because she was a senior in high school and a badass, and she, and we were too young to hang out with her and all her senior friends, because they were just too cool. This wasn't the first time a Hannigan and a Lockwood Perez met here in Fairfield. In the forties, both of our parents, Charlotte Lockwood, Kat's mom, and Annette's mother also, and my father Tom, along with his friends Gary Filati, hands up Gary, former mayor of Fairfield, Bud Tonason and Ray Simons, to name a few, were neighborhood kids, playing in Fairfield's downtown streets just around the corner from where we are now. And I'm sure they were creating a lot of trouble. What do you think, Scott? Fast forward to 1989, when Kat and I reconnect as newly married couples, with her husband Ken and my husband at the time, and as new parents in 1992, when we welcomed our children, Amanda and Connor. Pretty much, they would have been born on the same day, I think, but Amanda beat them by a few months. Separately, we forged our own path to politics, Kat here in our hometown, and me in Vallejo, where my scallye Hannigan roots run equally as deep. Our politics are different, most would say, but what isn't different is our passion, our passion for serving the public. Mayor Catherine Moy has a deep passion for people, particularly people who need help. She has a bright vision for Fairfield, and I know she's anxious to get started. And I know Kat will work hard to develop relationships with her colleagues, with the City of Fairfield staff, congratulations, city manager, and all of our county leaders. She knows partnerships and collaboration are in order to get things done for the benefit of your community. Mayor Moy is a local girl done good. Tonight, her ancestors are watching and joining us as we celebrate her and her passion for the people of the City of Fairfield. Congratulations, Mayor Moy. Congratulations, Mayor Moy, and Godspeed.
Thank you.
You could say "our ancestors."
Our ancestors, really.
All right, ma'am, raise your right hand and put your left one on the Bible.
There we go.
All right, I, state your name.
Catherine Marie Perez Moy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And against, and for, and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and.
Domestic.
Locally, domestic. All of them.
When my father read me the oath, the first time he read the whole thing all at once. So I'm sorry that this is happening to you.
No, 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 it's quite all right.
Okay. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
I will pledge true allegiance and.
Deep breath, Milo.
I've only done this five times. No more.
Okay, we're going to go slower. That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duty upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Moy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to take a short, five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene with the new council.
All right, everybody, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. And, um, let me just look back here, because this is my first time, so, um, I'm going to ask the clerk for roll call, please.
Okay, hold on, sorry.
No problem.
Um, Kate, Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
Here, thank you. Oh, boy. Boop, boop. Okay, um, we're gonna go ahead, and since we've reconvened with our new council, I'm going to ask for council reports again. Um, if you've already given a council report, it doesn't matter, you can do it again. Um, but we'll go ahead and start with Councilwoman Williams with the council report.
Thank you, Mayor Moy, um, and my new colleagues, uh, staff, and, um, thank you for all of you for being here today. Um, my campaign had a lot of ups and downs. Um, but the truth is, this moment started about 20 years ago. 20 years ago, I, uh, I had this, uh, this, this beautiful little boy. Um, he's an introvert, and he scooted out of here. Um, but I remember writing this journal to him, saying that he could be anything that he wanted to be. And it really made me think about everything that I wanted to do. And at the time, I was in corporate America, and, uh, and I really just sat and wrote down everything that I wanted and I saw for my life. And it was this moment where I could help govern and lead in this way. And so, um, that began, uh, me going to law school. So, the truth is, I went to law school not to be an attorney. I went to law school so that I could govern well, because I wanted to be in this space, but I wanted to do it just really, really well. I wanted to know what I was doing. I wanted to be analytically minded. And so, that began my journey. In that same year that I graduated from law school, I met this amazing lady, and she's here tonight, Peggy Cohen Thompson. She's a trustee, but what was amazing is, she saw me before I saw myself. She saw me before I saw myself. And that, well, there's a whole lot of ups and downs from there in these 20 years, but, but it just, that, that's what brought me to this moment. Finally, I want to say thank you to my husband, Earl Hall. He, we've been married for 21 years. He is the love of my life. And it only makes sense that he sits at this front row, to be here for this day that was 20 days, 20 years in the, in the, in the works. I love you. Thank you.
Councilman Tonison?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just say congratulations to the new, to the new members. We have four pretty fresh faces up here now, so, uh, congratulations to you all, and I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Vicaro.
Yeah, I too would like to congratulate, um, all my colleagues that were, um, sworn in tonight, and looking forward to the upcoming year and working together, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, also wanted to offer my congratulations to my new colleagues, um, the new mayor, and, um, I wanted to do, just to give a quick shout out to, um, Fairfield PD. Last week, I got to ride with them. If anyone has been watching us on Facebook or Instagram, um, Fairfield PD has been doing a Santa operation. So, they take Santa Claus around to our different neighborhoods, and they don't just drive through, but they sit and they stay and visit with kids, and adults, and dogs, and babies, um, until the very last one has come and has a chance to sit on Santa's lap and tell Santa what they wanted for Christmas. And it's a beautiful thing, it's a beautiful thing we can do for our community, and the best part is when the Santas, um, that speak Spanish comes out, and is able to connect with those communities where kids may not feel more comfortable talking in their own language. And so, I just want to thank, um, our police department for doing that, and for all their staff, and I know they have the, um, the cadets, or the, the, the high school volunteer cadets that come out and assist. So, it's a great program, and I'm just so fortunate and proud that we have that going on in our city. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Bertani?
Thank you, Mayor Moy. Uh, I just want to also congratulate all of the new colleagues sitting up here on this desk. It's exciting, it's a new day, it's a new time in Fairfield, and I just, you know, as you know, there are a lot of pressing concerns in this city. There is really a lot of work to be done, and you are looking at the Getting It Done Crew. That's who we're gonna be known as, the Getting It Done Crew. That's right. That's right. So, I'm looking forward, um, with anticipation, lot of hard work, um, to be done, but I think that this leadership team will be the team to really get some stuff across the finish line, and I look forward to working really hard with all of you here, our city manager, city attorney, they're key to our team, and so I think that we have a lot of work to do, and, and we have the capability to get it done. So, everybody out there, hold us accountable. That's it, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. And, last but not least, well, Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, really good to be here, it's also, uh, hard to believe that I'm here, but I'm only here because of the people that supported me in Fairfield. My wife, my family's here. Joe Martinez, my, uh, campaign manager, is, is, he's a big reason I'm up here. But, the one thing that pushed me to be on the council was the work that, um, Councilmember Bertani just was stating that needs to be done, and, um, I'm really looking forward to doing that work and making a difference in our community. I've been working, uh, with, um, a certain population in the Fairfield City for many years, and, uh, we used to sit, when I was at probation, talking about, you know, if we could do what we're doing here, and do this there, and do that there, it would be good, and, and it eventually snowballed into here I sit. And I just want to thank again all those that supported me, and, um, I'm really looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting some work done. Thank you very much.
So, what do y'all think? Quite a team, she's right. This is the Get It Done Team, right here. Um, I would like to report, just to remind everybody, that tomorrow night, we're going to be, uh, lighting, uh, the city's menorah at 5:30, uh, down at the county green, and I invite everybody, and I say happy Hanukkah, uh, to, it is Hanukkah, and we are five days away from Christmas, so Merry Christmas. I want to say thank you to everybody here, and everybody out there who voted for this team, because we are the team. We're gonna get this done, and, and there's a lot, we know what it is. We know that there are people out there sleeping tonight, trying to, in freezing temperatures. Um, we know that we will likely lose some again this year, and we know that this inhumanity must stop. Yes, and we are the team that's gonna stop it. We are going to give them help. We're going to take them off the streets, and they're going to get help with whatever, put them there. We're gonna be humane, and we're also going to clean up the streets. There's no more of this. There's no more of the inhumanity, there's no more of people being fearful to walk their kids to school in the morning because of the attacks by people who are mentally ill. And, we have great, I mean, this crew right here knows what they're doing with this. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you all the resumes, you voted for them, you know their resumes, and you know me. And, you'll get to know our new city manager, a lot more, and our city attorney, David Lynn, these, this is David squared to my left. And, um, they told me, you know, if you need to talk to me, you could say David, and they'll both look at me. So, yes, uh, you know, Councilwoman Bertani, you said it is a new day? It is, and, um, we are going to walk in love, and we're gonna have no fear. We are not going to say okay to the word no. We don't like that. We say, we want to hear from you, and that we are doing your agenda. No special agendas, it's your agenda. What you've been telling me for years, what you've been telling everybody else here for years, and what we all know, and what you all know. And, um, every corner of our city, we're gonna take care of. I see you, San Marco Street. We see you, Fifth Street. And, hey, Birdland, we see you. And we see you up in Rancho Solano, and all around. And Travis, Travis Air Force Base remains our star, and we're always here to support it, and it is in Councilwoman Bertani's, um, and Councilman Vicaro's district, and we're gonna take good care of it. And these are the experts in their districts, and they're gonna talk to me, and I'm talking to them, and we're gonna get done what you need in these districts. Um, I was born and raised here, and four of us up here now, um, were, were also raised here in Fairfield. So, I wouldn't mess with us. We know that, we know, we know it. And then we have Susun Valley out there, which my father-in-law always called God's country, and it is, and it is growing in its own way, and we are going to work very closely with the growers, with the people there that I grew up with, and we're gonna make sure that we do nothing to hurt that valley, and that everything we do, again, we do it in love, and we do it with education, and we do what's best for this city. That's all any of us want. And, I just want to say to my new colleagues, congratulations, and to my, we're, we're old school, me and Pam and Rick, we've been, I guess we're the oldie but goodies, not that they're old, but I'm just saying, we've been around a bit, around the block.
For yourself, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. So, I'm here for every one of them. They can talk to me in confidence, they can bark at me if they need to, but only behind closed doors. And, again, we're gonna walk in love. I love every one of them. This is not an easy job, sometimes it's thankless, but I thank each one of you for stepping up and doing this. I thank you. All right. So, uh, now, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Uh, have no report, but I will say congratulations to Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Panduro, Councilman Carr, and Mayor Moy. I look forward to working with this city council here in the future, uh, you know, the next couple of years. Uh, and, uh, as I told you, um, at a closed session, uh, Councilwoman Williams, Councilman Carr, you weren't there at that time, uh, but I told this council, the sky is the limit with this team, uh, and I believe that. We have an excellent city staff, and I look forward to getting to work with all of you. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report, but I would like to also my, offer my congratulations to Councilmembers Carr and Williams. Congratulations to Councilmember Panduro on her reelection, and welcome, Mayor Moy.
Thank you. And, Madam City Clerk?
I'll just echo everyone's congratulations to our new team.
Okay, well, with that, um, we're gonna go ahead and turn to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Sure. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature, or press star nine on your phone if you're on Zoom, and speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Leo Callejas.
Good evening, city staff and members of the community. My name is Leo Callejas with the Solano Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, but I'm here today as a resident of the city of Fairfield. I'm thrilled to extend my congratulations to our new mayor, Fairfield, Kat Moy, and to the newly-elected council members. This is a momentous occasion, and I have no doubt that each of you will bring a wealth of experience and knowledge to your respective roles. I have every confidence that under your leadership, our city will continue to thrive and grow. Your dedication to the betterment of our community is truly inspired, and I know that you will work tirelessly to address the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. I especially want to congratulate, uh, Councilmember Panduro here, who has been a mentor of mine, and, um, uh, a, a long-time board member of the Solano Hispanic Chamber. Lastly, I want to say that Mayor Price will be deeply missed by all of us who had the privilege to know him. And when I echo the, uh, wonderful words he always has to say, to say, uh, when he says, uh, "It's a wonderful day." He was a mentor of mine from, from a far distance. His leadership, dedication, and compassion will be remembered for generations to come. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and loved ones during this difficult time. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anand Patel.
Oh, okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Anand Patel, and I have served as the president and CEO of Visit Fairfield for the last 12 years. We are deeply saddened to learn of the Mayor Price's passing. Mayor Price has always been an advocate for Visit Fairfield and our efforts in promoting Fairfield and the Sassoon Valley. It was a pleasure chatting with him over the years at the countless number of events we both attended. He was everywhere. He was truly the people's mayor, attending larger events such as charity fundraisers, community events, and community events, and smaller events such as ribbon cuttings for new businesses. He will be remembered for his dedicated service for this community over decades, and he will be greatly missed. On a happier note, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Moy on her election. I look forward to continuing to work with you on promoting Fairfield as a tourism destination. In addition, I'd like to welcome and congratulate Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Williams on their elections, and Councilmember Panduro on your reelection. Your passion for making our city a great place to live and visit is a passion we share. Lastly, I want to congratulate city staff and Debbie Tavy on the most successful tree lighting ceremony I've seen in Fairfield. And my apologies, I was sick last time, so I wasn't able to make this statement. I've ever witnessed, I've never witnessed such a vibrant celebration that truly brought the community together. As some of you know, I live in downtown, so the heart of Fairfield is important to me, both personally and professionally. While walking home that night, I couldn't help but notice people gathered in the streets, enjoying the various entertainment, booths, pony and train rides, et cetera. But at 7:00 I had to get home to my son, and didn't really feel like making dinner. I figured, I'll pick something up, and we'll enjoy some food from one of the great, amazing dining offerings in downtown. I was disappointed, but only because the wait times were ridiculous. The restaurants were packed. Why were all these people in my downtown? Congratulations. Mission accomplished. The heart of Fairfield truly has a beat. Looking forward to the continued evolution of downtown Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is someone from the Fairfield Youth Commission. There are several members from the youth commission, I should say.
Hello, I'm Wayne.
I'm Nadia.
I'm Rishi.
Commissioner Baron.
All right. First and foremost, we want to give our condolences to the family of Mayor Price. Working with Mayor Price was something that all of us cherished, and he always told us how proud of us he was, and we hope to continue to make him proud. We would like to congratulate the new members, and as well as the former members who continue to work and make our city better. We also are excited for what this new year brings and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say that I love seeing the youth commissioners here, and I'm going to ask you in the very near future to give us some directives for you, you all, what you think that needs to be done. When we've interviewed them over the years, we've asked for this, and you're the new team, and we're a new team, and we're going to do this together, and we need you. So please come to us, any of us, with anything that we have, but I'd like you to come to meetings and tell us what you need. And if you need something on the agenda, you let me know, and we'll get it done, okay? Thank you for coming tonight.
And Jacob, did you want to speak still? Okay, thank you. Jacob Francisco.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Francisco. As you may have seen, I am a commissioner with the youth commission. Sadly, my term does end on the 31st of this month, and I kind of shot myself in the foot. I did, you guys voted on a item last meeting, and it was an update to the resolution for the city, for the youth commission. I was the person to spearhead that initiative, and I'm glad that the city council was able to approve that. But I did lower the age of the youth commission from 21 to 19, and I am currently 19, so I can no longer serve on the youth commission. But it's for the best. It's for the best. I, there are two things. Number one, my condolences go out to the family for Mayor Price. I initially met Mayor Price, I think it was during my STEM camp at the school district, and he came up to me and just shook my hand, and I was just like, oh my God, who's this guy? And then now I was appointed by him to the youth commission, and he's just done so much for our city. And just my condolences go to the family. And number two, I wanted to congratulate all of the newly electeds, Mayor Moy, Councilwoman Williams, Councilmember Carr, and congratulations, Councilwoman Panduro on your reelection. But again, those are the two things I really wanted to say. And I also wanted to just congratulate the city on this amazing team here that I, I hope that you guys will do some great things. And another thing I wanted to add was, yes, we are a youth commission, but please, send over a liaison from the city council. We have liaisons from the commission to the council, but no, no liaison from the council to the commission.
Touche. Francisco, you know, you did shoot yourself in the foot.
I did, yes.
But good, good on you. I still need you to come and talk to us.
I will hold you guys all accountable.
Please. And again, with your ideas, you're very active, and I appreciate seeing you out there, sir, so.
I'll be gone for about three years. I'm going to law school, graduating Davis in June, so I'll, I'll come back. Don't worry.
We'll hunt you down. Congratulations.
And I don't have any other speaker cards. Did anyone else want to speak? Okay, and there's no one online.
All right, thank you. Could you please, Madam Clerk, give us the consent calendar notice then?
Yes. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
So moved.
Second.
Just one minute. Are there any public speakers on the consent calendar?
No, I don't have any.
All right.
And I didn't, I didn't see who made the first.
I made the first.
Oh, okay.
Pam, second.
Okay, and we'll vote. There was a second from.
Yes, I got that.
You got it?
And is that unanimous?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? I heard you all say yes. Thank you. All right. So now we are going to move on, and it's time for us as a group to choose the vice mayor. And I would like to nominate Councilwoman Bertoni to be the vice mayor for a couple of reasons. One is that she has experience as vice mayor, and I don't have experience as mayor, so I would like to have her to help guide me with some of that. Also, we've spent a lot of time over the years talking, and I think we will do a good job leading. We don't think alike always, of course, and that's a good thing. We don't want to have all that. But she's a strong leader, and so I'm asking for this council to approve Councilwoman Bertoni as a vice mayor.
So I'm moved.
Right. Do we have a second? Can we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam.
You're good. Do you have anything to say?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor Moy, for this opportunity. We've already started meetings every couple of weeks to talk about the plans that we will be carrying forward. Put your seat belts on, because we are really getting ready to get it done out here in the city. So thank you for the opportunity, colleagues. Thank you for your vote of confidence. Much appreciated, and I will not disappoint. Tyler and Dylan and Jacob, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Now we're going to go to public hearings, and we'll have.
Item nine?
Yes.
Public hearing and resolution 2022-342 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, adopting a mitigated negative declaration ER 2021-039 for the Sunset Avenue Apartments project involving 130 apartments on approximately 8.71 acres at the southeast corner of Sunset Avenue and East Tabor Avenue. APNs 0037-030-2200, 0037-030-210, 0037-060-480. Finding the proposed annexation ANX 2021-002 of 4.72 acres located on Sunset Avenue, APN 0037-060-480 and 0037-060-490 is consistent with the city's general plan and municipal service review and requesting the Solano Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, to initiate proceedings for the reorganization of territory and first reading and ordinance of 2022-17 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, amending chapter 25, article 1, section 25, 12.3 of the Fairfield City Code, also known as the zoning map, rezoning one parcel, APN 0037-060-480 on Sunset Avenue from residential low to medium density, RLM District, to residential medium density, RM District. And our presenter is Senior Planner Jonathan Atkinson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Tonight I will be presenting a collection of requests as part of the Sunset Avenue Apartments project. This includes an annexation, zone change, and environmental review. The site is 10.61 acres of land at the southeast corner of Sunset Avenue and East Tabor. 8.71 acres of the site will be developed as part of a multifamily residential development. 4.72 acres of the site are currently under the jurisdiction of Solano County, but surrounded by Fairfield city limits and is proposed to be annexed. On September 28th, 2022, the planning commission held a public hearing for the proposed project. The planning commission adopted resolution number PC 2022-10, in which the approval of a development review was granted. This action also included a recommendation that the city council approve an annexation and zone change, as well as adopt a mitigated negative declaration. The annexation request involves two parcels totaling 4.72 acres, one at 1776 Sunset Avenue, and the other just off of Laurel Creek. Both parcels are identified as Annexation Area H in the city's municipal services review. The parcels are under Solano County jurisdiction. They are surrounded or situated within Fairfield city limits. Annexation requirements can be met, and full utilities and services are available to serve the annexation area. The two northernmost parcels are zoned RM or residential medium density district, and the two annexation parcels have pre-zoning designations of RLM or residential low medium density district and open space conservation district. All of the project parcels have a general plan designation of residential medium density to facilitate the multifamily residential development. City council approval of the zone change is required for one parcel at 1776 Sunset Avenue from residential low medium density to residential medium density district. The second annexation parcel would remain as open space conservation. The development review approval and the request before the city council tonight would allow for the construction of the multifamily residential development, which would include 130 apartments. The site would be accessible from a single driveway off of Sunset Avenue and with emergency vehicle access on East Tabor Avenue. Following the review of the project, staff prepared an initial study to analyze potential significant impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. The initial study identified biological resources, cultural resources, noise, transportation, as well as tribal cultural resources as potential significant impacts. However, all of these potential significant impacts can be mitigated to a less than significant impact through the implementation of the mitigation measures. The environmental document is part of your packet. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution 2022-342. This would find the annexation consistent with the city of Fairfield Municipal Services Review, which is necessary for Solano LAFCO or Land Area Formation Commission approval. This would also grant the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. Staff also recommends that the city council conduct the first reading of ordinance number 2022-17, and this would initiate a zone change from residential low medium density district to residential medium district, density district for one parcel. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the city council. The applicant team is also in attendance and available if any questions arise. Thank you.
Colleagues, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Tarzan?
Thank you. I've had a citizen reach out to me today with concerns about the foliage that's going to be there. Could you, could you expand on that a little bit? What, what he's talking about is maybe more, but that's where I wanted to go. So we're rounding out the whole, the whole complex. Why don't you come up, Brian?
Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
We haven't opened the public hearing yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing then, if that's all right.
Okay, and I do have another request to speak as well.
Okay, perfect then. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing.
Three minutes, or, because I wrote a speech.
I'm, you can speak. I just wanted to ask you a question. If you can limit it to the foliage that you were asking about, because you had some pretty good comments on about how you thought that would be better.
So as you all know, vacant lots, I'm against them, been trying to change them. And this has been, I think it's one of the worst lots in the, in the city here, has done the most damage. And I had an example of a lady seven, eight months ago. I won't share it, but I just wanted something, I wanted them to be, I want this, this lot here to make an effort to make it better in that community, not just come along, these developers come along and just do, hey, here's a building, and it's just going to settle in with all the other apartment complexes that I don't think have enough vegetation or plants. I don't know, I did some research, and it says foliage and canopy can set the tone and influence the health of that community, not just the physical health, but the emotional health of that community. And if they're going to come in, and I can't really tell from that map, I wish they had something better, but it doesn't look like there's enough trees, bushes, color. I'd love to see some color in there. There's not a lot of color, except tan and black and gray in that area. That's not color. I don't see it there, and that's what I wanted to get across to you. I don't, I would love to see him go back to the developers, go back and just add some more to that.
There's something, something we can talk about, Mr. City Manager. Not, not on this. I'm not, I'm not worried about, I like the plan. I like the foliage. I just wanted to, if there's something that we can look at that will tell us how much, I mean, because it looked, when you look at this picture, it looks like there's a bunch of bushes out in front. Is there any way to go more in depth on that to kind of appease Brian's wants or desires?
I'd be happy to, to address the gentleman's concerns. So just wanted to note that there will be street trees that are required. This map may not represent them, you know, as it will be in the field, but there would be one street tree for every 25 feet of frontage. So that's quite a bit of foliage along East Tabor and Sunset Avenue, not to mention trees that are within the interior of the project site.
And those are going to grow fairly large?
Yes, they, they would. And certain species of trees would be required to be 24-inch box size at, at the time of planning, which is a pretty decent size, nursery size.
Okay.
size.
Okay.
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is it possible for you to maybe come back with a, just a better scaled version of the fol- like, the foliage as we'll actually visualize it, is that possible? To give us a, a clearer rendition of what it would look like around this, this parcel?
So, I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, the landscape plan, um, that is a part of the overall design package, uh, that was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, um, and upon their review and approval, that's why they've recommended to the City Council for the zone change and the annexation. Um, of course, it's within City Council's purview, if you would like to send this back, uh, to the Planning Commission for, for the landscaping plan. Um, I don't know, Jonathan, um, if, if you have a slide on the overall landscaping plan, uh, or that's something that, you know, we could share with City Council, um, and, and with, um, the resident?
Yeah, the point of clarification, I'm not asking that this go back to the Planning Commission, it'd be great to have a look at the landscaping plan, that's exactly what I'm asking for, actually.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And let me just add, I'm not looking for, you know, like, Rodeo Drive, I'm just thinking some other areas and, or some other apartment complexes in that area just don't have a lot, a lot of vegetation. Um, and I'd like to have that, this new complex, um, be a standout, because I, that's a difficult area down there and it could be, it could use a little uplifting.
We'll, we'll get that information and I'll share it with you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, Councilman Carr, you had a question?
Um, is there any, um, housing set aside at moderate or low income for this project?
Uh, as far as I'm aware, this project would be 100% market rate. Uh, we do have representatives from the development team, uh, present, I think they'd be suited to, to answer questions regarding, um, potential price points, but, um, it is market rate.
Thank you.
And I do have a speaker, Brent Little.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brent Little and I'm here tonight on behalf of Redtail Multifamily Land Development. Uh, first, I want to thank you for putting us on the agenda on such a memorable and meaningful evening and, uh, congratulate all of you that were sworn in tonight and, of course, uh, wish our condolences to everybody in the community and to Mayor Price's family as well. So to tell you a little something about Redtail, uh, we're a fully integrated home building, uh, residential development firm, which means we, uh, build, we do all the development, all the entitlement, and then we do the design work and then we build it and then we manage it and lease it out as well. And we think that that gives us a, a full understanding of everything that comes along, uh, in that, uh, in our, our need for our projects. And, uh, it's, it's important for us to, to have all those data points and we think that that gives us a real good pride of ownership in the community. Um, this particular project, uh, we're very excited for, uh, because it's, uh, something different than just a, a normal apartment community. This community is, um, is larger units, so units that you'd more accustomed to see be townhome units. And they're direct access garages, two-car garages and, uh, a fairly robust landscaping and, and I would be happy to give the gentleman my information and speak to him directly. And as we go through the, uh, the design process with staff, we've made our initial submittal, but of course, we have a lot of other designs and construction, uh, documents and engineering that we need to, uh, to process through the city. So, uh, we are, are very involved in the communities that we're working in, which is why we own the buildings and lease them ourselves. Uh, we enjoy having that connection with the community. In fact, uh, we have, um, we have a, a Northern California office and we have, uh, three other projects just in this region. Uh, we have two in Vacaville and, uh, one in Sassoon as well. So, uh, we, we believe in this community and this particular product is, uh, we think especially suited. After doing some of our, our market research, what we found is that there's, uh, a number of families in this community that haven't, they're, they're not ready to make that next step to homeownership, but they've outgrown where they're at and they want to remain in the community and so they need bigger places. And so that's what we're providing, is this is a larger unit, it's still workforce housing, uh, and it's meant for the people here in the community and that's who we're targeting. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, you have. I did, uh, first want to, uh, thank Jonathan and all of staff. Uh, we've been working on this project for, um, gosh, maybe a year and a half, uh, going through all the, the steps and processes and, and as you know, we're, um, since we're annexing, uh, that has led to a, a number of other steps that we have to go through, both with, um, LAFCO and then the Airport Land Use Commission. So there's a, a lot in the process that we have to, to consider and, uh, staff's been terrific to work with and we really appreciate it. Uh, one other thing I just wanted to point out is just, uh, some general things about the project. Um, I don't want to, uh, repeat too much of what Jonathan said and what's in the staff report, but I think it's important to note that, uh, we are consistent with the general plan. I know he had a number of, uh, uh, general plan consistencies outlined in the report, but, uh, we're not changing the general plan. The zone change is only for the annexation parcel, uh, and we do have a robust number of amenities in the community. Uh, it really is, uh, truly a resort-style clubhouse and rec center. Uh, and as far as just one other comment on landscaping, uh, the landscaping is something that we've, um, spent a lot of time on and we've, uh, part of our submittal was a, um, a tree report and tree survey and that ties with our, uh, our planting plans. So, in fact, the, um, the major tree that is a part of this project is, uh, oaks. So, uh, I think the number is we have roughly, uh, 40, um, of the larger oaks that we'll be planting out there. Um, so we're happy to work with the gentleman, anybody in the community and continue working, uh, with staff and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Councilman Panduro?
Thank you for, um, for sharing that information. I just have, you had, you mentioned you had, um, projects in Vacaville and Sassoon, can you name which ones those are?
I'm sorry?
The projects you have in Vacaville and Sassoon?
Yes, um, I don't.
They already built or?
No, they aren't, no.
Okay.
So the, the, those three projects are under construction.
Got it, okay. I was thinking I could drive by and check it out.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I, I can send you information because they've, they've been approved and, uh, um, like I said, two of them are under construction and I think, uh, one of them is, uh, just in the design development. It's approved, but in the construction drawings, but I'm happy to share any information on those or any of our projects. So the, the firm operates coast to coast.
And then I was just gonna add that, so that is my district and I know this lot, like, uh, Mr. Lynch said, it's, it's been, it's been needing some love for a very long time and so I'm excited to see something going in that's gonna provide a positive impact to that set of town, because it definitely needs some more diverse housing and just, our whole community needs some more diverse type of housing, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited about it.
Any other questions, Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for a great report and for the additional information. Are you planning on doing any community outreach in terms of, um, you know, understanding the community dynamics and, you know, getting to know the community around this, what looks like a very substantial development? Um, I just, uh, I just think it's a good practice for, uh, to be community partners, like you mentioned, uh, earlier in, in your, in your comments. And so I'm just wondering if you're planning any kind of outreach efforts to get into this community and so that, you know, that people know who you are and you know who they are and we're one big happy community. Anything like that on the horizon?
Yeah, for sure. So, um, one of the things that, um, the company does, and, and again, this, uh, comes from when you have your own construction company and management company and you do so much of it in-house, uh, we have outreach, uh, to businesses and, uh, employers, anybody in the area to, uh, let them know, here's the project that's coming, here's, uh, you know, preferred, I'm not sure, I, I know preferred isn't the right terminology, what they do for employers, but they do, uh, recognizing that most of the people that are going to live in this community are already in the community, um, so they conduct outreach to the businesses to try and say, hey, you know, employer, um, it would be advantageous if you, you know, showed your residents this and here's the things that we offer for them.
Does your outreach include outreach to residents?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. That are currently in the community?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to that, so please keep us apprised of those activities. I'm sure some of us would like to be there, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions, Councilman Tonison?
So, uh, what is the leasing strategy? Is it month-to-month, yearly? Do you, does it vary?
It, it's typically year leases.
Is it yearly? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, colleagues? All right, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, are there other speakers?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I say one thing? Sorry.
No.[1644.44][1644.44](Laughter) We've, we've had you up already, but thank you. We can talk to you after and, um, he said he would speak with you, I think that would be great, okay? Thank you. Um, is, is, is that it?
Yes, you just need to close the hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And, uh, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question. Can we take this with one, um, motion?
Um, no, I would recommend that you take it in two parts. The first would be to approve Resolution 2022-342. The second would be to waive, uh, first reading and introduce by title only the ordinance 202217.
So moved.
Second.
Well, hold on, so.
I'm sorry.
The first, the first motion you would make is to approve Resolution 2022-342 as previously read by the city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it, uh, it's unanimous.
Was that Councilmember Panduro, that second?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, the second motion, uh, should the council choose to do it, would be to waive the full reading, read by title only and introduce for ordinance for first reading, uh, ordinance 2022-17 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield amending Chapter 25, Article 1, Section 25.12.3 of the Fairfield City Code, also known as the zoning map, rezoning one parcel known as APN 0037-060-480 on Sunset Avenue from residential low medium density RLM District to residential medium density RM District.
So moved. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn, and if we have no other business, before this council adjourns to Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Thank you, audience, and thank you, colleagues.